All right. Good evening, everyone. I will call the April twenty fourth, two thousand twenty-three meeting of the Newtown Township Board of Supervisors to order. I will note that the board did meet an executive session this evening where we discussed uh one personnel matter and one legal matter. And with that, I will ask Mr. Sharrett to please call the roll.
Of course. Supervisor Altieri.
Here.
Supervisor Roberts Lightcap.
Here.
Supervisor Partridge.
Here.
Supervisor Russo.
Here.
Supervisor Chanlis.
Here.
And then I note that the township manager and township engineer are currently attending the P Sats conference. Uh your township solicitors present and the director codes and the director of public works are here representing the township manager.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sharretts. We will now move down to the moment of silence. I ask, and I think it's very fitting that tonight we remember uh our uh brave women and men in uniform, whether they're serving in active duty in the reserves uh or here in their local communities as a member of the police department, fire department. And now we'll stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands. A nation undergone indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Section five, the agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda as presented? Motion was made by Supervisor Russo, seconded by Supervisor Chanlis. Is there any board discussion? All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item six, public comment for agenda items only. If there's any members of the public who have any comments they wish to make on any agenda item, please come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record. I will also note while we're waiting for anyone to come up that we did not receive any public comment in the email Dropbox nor do, excuse me, in the email uh box, nor did we receive anything in the township Dropbox. Let the record reflect that no one has come up to provide any public comment at this time. We'll now move down to section seven, seven point one. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from the April tenth, two thousand twenty-three meeting of the board of supervisors?
So moved.
Second.
Motion was made by Supervisor Russo, seconded by Supervisor Roberts Lightcap. Is there any board discussion? All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Now we'll get into the fun stuff, the resolutions, the recognition. We're going to go a little bit out of order. We're going to take eight point four first. We're going to get a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash twelve honoring the general smoothly D Butler detachment number seven forty-one. Supervisor Chanlis.
Uh resolution twenty twenty-three dash twelve honoring General Smidley, Smidley D Butler detachment number seven forty-one, whereas the freedoms we enjoy as Americans have been purchased and maintained at a high price throughout our history. And whereas in honor of the dedicated men and women of the U.S. Armed Forces, we express our gratitude and pledge our support so that their sacrifice will stand before the entire world as a tribute to the spirit and determination of people dedicated to the principles of freedom and democracy. And whereas the Marine Corps League, General Smidley D Butler detachment number seven forty-one is one of these dedicated groups comprised of honorably discharged active duty and reserve Marines and retired Marines. And whereas the General Smidley D Butler detachment number seven forty-one has supported Newtown Township for many years through a variety of programs for veterans and citizens alike, and by performing such acts as donating flags, acting as honor guard, making scholarships available, assisting with the annual Toys for Talks campaign, and in many other ways. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors in Newtown Township would like to thank General Smidley D Butler detachment number seven forty-one for their service to our community and our country, and urge all citizens to honor our veterans and rededicate themselves to the preservation of our nation and the principles it was founded on. Adopted this twenty-fourth day of April, two thousand twenty-three. That's my motion.
Motion was made by Supervisor Chanlis, seconded by Supervisor Partridge. Is there any board discussion? Just want to say um thank you for not only being here today, but thank you for your service to our country and more importantly, your service to our community. I know it's uh greatly appreciated. And we're all sitting up here today because of the sacrifices you all have made. So thank you very much. If we can, let's, let's, let's just take that vote real quick for the record. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? There we go. And I don't know if, if any of you want to say anything. If not, we'll just get a photo and uh appreciate it.
I think we did the fraud.
Yeah.
Ready, one, two, three. Go.
Thank you very much, everyone. All right. Now we'll move down to uh, we'll move up to eight point one, which is the presentation of resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh eight for National Library Week to the library director, Ms. Caruso. This was actually approved and read at last weeks or two weeks ago's meeting. And so tonight we're just presenting it. There's Arlene. How are you, Arlene? Good, good. Just make sure that microphone's on. I'll let you say a few words and then I have no idea. What's it say?
Right. Got it. Right. Yes, thank you. I'm Arlene Caruso. I'm the director of Newtown Public Library. And I want to wish you all a happy National Library Week. It goes through Sunday to Saturday. So make sure to stop in at your library right across the hall and say hello to, to us. Um I want to thank the supervisors for always being a huge supporter of the library and just as last year increasing your contribution to the library. I want to thank the Newtown Township staff, especially the Public Works Department, who have always been such a great assistance to the library. I want to thank the library board of trustees. Um one of our trustees I know is here tonight. He's all the way back there. That's uh Benny McDonald. We call him TV. Um also want to thank the friends who have given lots of support to the library through the years. And last, I'd like to thank the library staff who are with us tonight. Most of our members, if you could stand. And those two are So this is the reason why we've had so much success right there. They're our staff. And I know I've put this in your reports every month how great the library's been doing, but I thought I'd do a little summary for you. Um won't take long. Um so we've had unprecedented success in the past year. For the first time ever, we reached ten thousand items circulated in a month last summer in June. You may remember that. Um and since then, we've gone over ten thousand five times, uh including last month, which never happened before June of two thousand twenty-two. So we're definitely on a roll. Um and I know in April, we already beat last April's number. So we're going to be at ten thousand again this month. Um every month for the past twelve months, we've experienced monthly highs in circulation. So we just hope that keeps continuing as well. Um and between two thousand eighteen and two thousand twenty-two, we've seen our circulation increase seventy-seven percent. So it is the highest percentage of any library in Delaware County. So you should be proud of us. We're really working hard for, for the community. And um last year, for the first time, we reached over a hundred thousand items circulated in a year. So we've had a really tremendous year. And part of that is our youth services department, which has always been this library's bread and butter. We've had um fifteen hundred attendees in the first quarter of um of this year uh come to the youth services programming. We are offering innovative programs. Under the summer, we're working with Parks and Rec to offer the Parks Passport Program. I can give you details on that if you'd like. Um and also we're gearing up for summer reading and learning program this summer for all the kids in our community, and it's going to be one for the books. Uh no pun intended, or maybe pun intended. Um also for the adults, we've been working on uh offering more, more programs for the adults. We have two book clubs now. We have a Zoom book club that never missed a meeting during the pandemic. And we have a new cookbook club that meets here uh on the second Wednesday and has a waiting list the next day after we have it. So it's super popular, so popular that we'll probably add another one. Maybe this summer, maybe a brunch club. We're not sure yet. Uh we also offer a yoga program for the first time. We've had our first poetry program last week. And we're just hoping to keep growing that so people have more reason to come to our library. We also have a lot of new things, thanks to the friends. Um you may have noticed it down at the bottom. There's a new book drop, which has really been needed. Um we have new museum passes that circulate to residents and anyone here in the county. We circulate hotspots. The friends got us a people counter so we can measure our success based on how many visits we've had. And um of course, the friends will have their book sale right here, October thirteenth through the fifteenth later this year. Um and also I want to thank the township one more time for all the paint and all the new carpeting that we had in the past year or so. It's really made a difference and the library just looks fantastic. And what is to come now? Um we're hoping to get this new community meeting room established. We've been working on a grant and hopefully we'll have that in the coming years. Uh we'd like to get signage for the library that has a library name on it out front. We hope the patio gets renovated sometime. We're looking forward to that. And next year is our fiftieth anniversary. So we'll be celebrating that next year with uh programs and all kinds of fun things for families for the community. Uh that's all I have for you. You have any questions for me?
I don't think we have any questions, but um Arlene, I think that you did a pretty good synopsis of the, quite frankly, record-breaking year that the library has had. Um and as you said, I mean, as much as you want to give credit to your staff, it, it also stems from the top and your steady hand and leadership has been instrumental in ensuring that that library has its success. So thank you for everything. And if we can grab your staff, and we'll do that. All right. Now we'll move down to eight point two, which is to consider approving resolution twenty twenty-three dash ten, recognizing the Saint Anastasia School Varsity Girls Basketball Team for the back-to-back state championship win. The resolution number twenty twenty-three dash ten, recognizing Saint Anastasia Schools two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three Varsity Girls Basketball Team for winning the Pennsylvania State Championship. Whereas Newtown Township recognizes the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three Saint Anastasia School Varsity Girls Basketball Team on winning the Pennsylvania State Championship for the second consecutive year in a row. And whereas, in addition to the Pennsylvania State Championship title, the team had a record thirty-four and one season, which included winning the last thirty games of the season, the prestigious Spartan Christmas Tournament, the Invitational Only Saint Hellenia Tournament, Hellenia Tournament, the Region Twenty-five Championship, and the Archdiocese of Philadelphia Championship. And whereas, in addition to their skills on the court, the team is dedicated to the community, having raised over thirty thousand dollars and counting for the Make-A-Wish Foundation. And whereas, all of Newtown Township is proud of the members of this team, their accomplishments, and they're representing Newtown Township in such a positive manner. Now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Supervisors of Newtown Township would like to recognize and honor the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three Saint Anastasia Varsity Girls Basketball Team on its outstanding season and on winning for the second consecutive year, the Pennsylvania State Championship adopted this twenty-fourth day of April, two thousand twenty-three, and that is my motion. Motion was made by the chair, seconded by Supervisor Chanlis. Uh as you are starting to see, I have to comment on everything. And the only thing I will say is that the Friday before you all went to your championship game, I saw Coach Andresanti over at First Watch. He was having breakfast. I probably ruined his breakfast when I went over to say hi to him. And the thing he said to me, when I said, you know, you're ready for this, you're ready for this game. He said, don't worry, we'll be back. We'll, we'll get another resolution. We'll get another resolution. And so here it is. Uh so congratulations to you all. Uh it's extremely, you know, awesome. I mean, the last thirty games, right? Pretty awesome. Uh so with that, I'll call the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries, and you saw the rest of it. Come on up. Let's go. All right. All right. Now we'll move to section or item eight point three to consider approving resolution twenty twenty-three dash eleven, recognizing the Newtown Square Business Association's honor of being named the Business Association of the Year by the Delaware County Chamber of Commerce. Supervisor Roberts Lightcap.
I'd like to make a resul- I'd like to um propose a resolution number twenty twenty, twenty twenty-three dash eleven, recognizing the Newtown Square Business Association's honor of being named Business Association of the Year by the Delaware County Chamber of Commerce. Whereas on March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three, the Newtown Square Business Association was honored as the Business Association of the Year by the Delaware County Chamber of Commerce. And whereas, the Newtown Square Business Association was recognized because of their outstanding members who dedication, time, and talent have enhanced the lives of business owners and residents alike in Newtown Township through numerous annual events. And whereas Newtown Square Business Association once was founded in nineteen seventy-six to support local stores and business professionals and celebrate the local business community. And whereas, since its founding, the Newtown Square Business Association has helped Newtown Square grow, prosper, and become a destination for local residents and visitors to shop and shop, visit, and open their own small business in our community. Now there be resolved, the Board of Supervisors of the Township of Newtown would like to congratulate the Newtown Square Business Association on receiving such prestigious honor and extended wishes for ongoing success. Resolve this twenty-fifth day of April, two thousand twenty-three. That's my motion.
Second, motion was made by Supervisor Roberts Lightcap, seconded by the chair. Uh we have the president of the Business Association, who's no stranger to this board, Mr. Paul Seligson. Um and Paul, I mean, I don't know what else can be said except for the fact that this is an amazing, amazing honor for, for you and for your organization. We know that you work tirelessly. Your members work tirelessly. Uh and we appreciate everything that your association has done and continues to do for us here.
Thank you very much. On behalf of, you know, we have an excellent board and hit the board really good, our board. So jazzed by I mean, they're creative, they think outside the box, and they're bringing all these new ideas.
Awesome. Uh let's take a vote on that. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Congratulations, Paul. All right. Whoever thought we'd have so many resolutions in one night? Save the best for last. Yeah. So now we'll do eight point five, consider approving resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirteen, recognizing Sergeant Joseph Vandergriff's years of service. Supervisor Partridge.
Okay, resolution two thousand twenty-three dash thirteen, recognizing Joseph Vandergriff's years of service. Whereas, the Board of Supervisors of Newtown Township, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, wishes on behalf of the citizens of Newtown Township to publish publicly recognize the service of Joseph Vandergriff to the Newtown Township community. And whereas Joseph Vandergriff has served on the Newtown Township Police Department since April third, nineteen ninety-eight. And whereas Joseph Vandergriff served the department as a traffic safety officer, detective, and was promoted to sergeant in two thousand seventeen. And whereas Joseph Vandergriff received three distinguished unit commendations, an honorable service award, and numerous letters of thanks and appreciation from the public and surrounding police departments. Whereas Joseph Vandergriff served as guest instructor for the FBI Basic Police Sniper School and was a member of the Central Delaware County Tactical Response Team. And whereas Joseph Vandergriff retired on April sixth, two thousand twenty-three, after twenty-five years of service to the Newtown Township community and Newtown Township Police Department. And now therefore be it resolved that the board, that the Newtown Township hereby acknowledges, not acknowledges the longstanding public service, dedication, and commitment to the residents of Newtown Township demonstrated by Joseph Vandergriff, adopted this twenty-fourth day of April, two thousand twenty-three, and that is my motion.
Motion was made by Supervisor Partridge, seconded by Supervisor Russo. I know that Chief Lund also has a presentation they wants to make, but we'll do this um motion first, and then I'll turn it over to you, chief, to, to do your, your presentation. But uh Sergeant Vandergriff, uh I have had the opportunity to uh know him not only uh as a someone who grew up in this township running from him, I mean, speaking with him, uh but also in this capacity as a supervisor, I've had the opportunity to go along two years in a row on a ride along with him. Uh and there was a lot of very good conversations that we had, but in addition to the conversations, there's a lot of uh knowledge that was just uh distilled to me over those, those last two um ride-alongs. I appreciate everything that you've done for the township, and I appreciate everything that uh you've been able to teach me in just two ride-alongs. And then I'll just note too that the day that you started here was the day before my ninth birthday. So, you know, really, really appreciate that even more. With that, I heard that. With that, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And then chief, I'll let you do your presentation.
Ever. Uh Joe's retirement plaque is uh then to Sergeant Joseph Vandergriff in appreciation and recognition for twenty-five years of dedicated service to Newtown Township Police Department and the Newtown Township community.
And for those who did not just hear that, we'll add an asterisk to his, his resolution that he's about to have his first granddaughter, second granddaughter, who's running out to the door now. All right. Move down to section nine, reports, nine point one, report from the police chief. Chief Lund, do you have anything to add or supplement? Thank you very much. Nine point two, report from the fire chief. Chief Everloff, do you have anything to add or supplement? Thank you very much. Nine point three, report from the Public Works Director, Mr. Sharretts. Do you have anything to add or supplement? Thank you very much. Nine point four, report from the building slash codes officer, Mr. Rescheck. Do you have anything to add or supplement? Thank you very much. Nine point five, report from the finance director, Ms. Bollock. Do you have anything to add or supplement? Thank you very much. Report from the township engineer. He is not here. He's, he's attending the conference for the Pennsylvania State Association of Township Supervisors. We'll now move down to section ten, payments. Ten point one, can I get a motion approving the one thousand one hundred and five dollar escrow release payment to Jason McCarron at thirty-five oh six Fortin Road for completed UNO work?
Second.
Motion was made by Supervisor Partridge, seconded by Supervisor Roberts Lightcap. Is there any board discussion? All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Section eleven, bills, eleven point one. Uh can I get a motion approving bills on check register A dated April twenty-four, two thousand twenty-three totaling one hundred eighty-six thousand, three hundred and six dollars and twenty-four cents?
So moved.
Motion was made by Supervisor Roberts Lightcap, seconded by Supervisor Partridge. Is there any board discussion? All is in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Section twelve, developer release, twelve point one. Can I get a motion approving escrow reduction number four, as requested by Toll Brothers totaling three hundred and ninety-seven thousand, six hundred and thirty dollars and fifty cents? The L's preserved townhomes leaving a remaining balance of one hundred and sixty-four thousand, three hundred and ninety-two dollars and thirty-seven cents, as approved by Stan Tech Engineering.
Second.
Motion was made by Supervisor Partridge, seconded by Supervisor Roberts Lightcap. Is there any board discussion? All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Twelve point two, can I get a motion approving the four hundred and sixty-five thousand, nine hundred and sixty-six dollar final release from the letter of credit for Episcopal Academy relative to the gatehouse and parking renovation?
Some moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion was made by Supervisor Robert Seikap, seconded by Supervisor Partridge. Is there any board discussion? I do have one question. The, um, that, has it been, we usually hold that, what, for two years? It's been two years already? How long do we usually hold the letter of credit for?
No, it's not a performance bond. It's just
Oh, you're right.
It's when, it's when the, they're accepted as final.
You're right. You're right. Okay. All is in favor, signify by, is there any more board discussion? All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We're gonna punt on the public hearing. We're gonna go down to new business. We're gonna punt four point one. We're gonna get on the four point two. Fourteen point two, can I get a motion directing the township solicitor, zoning officer, and engineer to prepare a draft ordinance increasing wetland and repairing buffer requirements in the zoning code?
Some moved.
Motion was made by Supervisor Robert Seikap, seconded by Supervisor Partridge. Is there any board discussion? The only thing I'll note is that this has been something that's been discussed among the board. We have, since we're engaging the township engineer to go after that, along with the township solicitor and director of codes, this is just formalizing that direction. You guys will come back with something and then we'll approve it. Great. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Fourteen point three, can I get a motion approving the proposal from Panoni for a roof and building envelope assessment and report for the paper mill house totaling thirteen thousand dollars?
Second.
Motion was made by Supervisor Chandler, seconded by Supervisor Robert Seikap. Is there any board discussion? All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Fourteen point four, can I get a motion accepting and authorizing the township manager to sign the paperwork associated with the one hundred and two thousand, nine hundred and twenty-two body cameras sub grant award to the police department? Motion is made by Supervisor Russo, seconded by Supervisor Chanlist. Is there any board discussion? Chief, do you want to add anything to this? Okay. Um, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Fourteen point five, can we get a motion proving the purchase of two two thousand twenty-three vehicles which will be utilized as pool vehicles as follows, forty-five thousand dollars is budgeted per vehicle for a total of ninety thousand dollars. A two thousand twenty-three Chevy Tahoe police package at a cost of forty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars. A two thousand twenty-three Ford Explorer police package at a cost of forty-one thousand, one hundred dollars. Motion was made by Supervisor Partridge, seconded by Supervisor Chanlist. Is there any board discussion? Anything to add? Thank you very much. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Fourteen point six, can I get a motion approving the seven thousand five hundred ninety-five dollars to replace two failed traffic loops at Radnor Drive and Westchester Pike with a video detection system?
So moved.
The motion was made by Supervisor Robert Seikap, seconded by Supervisor Partridge. Is there any board discussion? Can you just explain this in a little bit greater detail, Mr. Sharitz?
Sure. So underneath Westchester Pike, there are vehicle loops. Some are for turning. And, and it's the detection that the signal knows that there's a, there's somebody in line to do a turn. Sometimes they're vehicle density loops. It tells how, how much traffic is going down Westchester Pike. Occasionally those loops fail, so you have to dig up the road, put the, the new wires back in again. What we have been gradually doing is moving to a video detection system up above that, that the camera comes down, and then you're gonna have to dig up the road again.
That camera is not, that camera is just, is just a sensor essentially. It's not taking an actual image, is that how?
It does not, it does not record images. It's just sensing the, the vehicles that are there.
Got it. Any other board discussion? All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Fourteen point seven, consider authorizing the township manager to sign the sewage planning module component three, section J, chapter ninety-four, consistency determination. Is there a second? Motion was made by Supervisor Partridge, seconded by Supervisor Chanlist. Is there any board discussion? Mr. Sharitz, Mr. Skora, anyone?
This is the sewage planning component of the Nolan Development. It was already approved for thirteen lot subdivision in the past. Now they want to go to eighteen lots. This is not an approval of that subdivision. That's still before the planning commission and will be before the board. This is solely related to their request to seek EEP approval to have enough sewage capacity to be able to provide sewer for those eighteen lots should they be approved. This is solely saying that under our planning and zoning structure, this is appropriate, and it is.
So how does that, I mean, walk me through that real quick. So if they why would we approve this before we run? Or I guess it's kind of running concurrently with the land development?
Yeah, this is solely, there's a planning process associated with providing sewage for any new development. And so the DEP has to approve it. And, you know, we have a Act five thirty-seven plan update from two thousand and sixteen. This is just updating that, saying, okay, now there's eighteen more houses, and we want to connect. So there's no downside of doing this. If, 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 if they do get approval for eighteen lots, they're gonna have to go ask the DEP for that. If you only approve less than eighteen lots, they're still gonna need approval for thirteen lots.
So it's just for the capacity?
It's, it, it is, right. We're saying that what they're doing is compliant with our planning and zoning.
Got it. And so our approval tonight is not a reflection on the final land development plans. Though us by saying, by us, if we were to approve this tonight and say, you know, that they can go out for the eighteen lots, it's not us saying that we agree with the eighteen lots.
Just, just, it's just saying that their request to provide sewage capacity for eighteen lots is consistent with our zoning and planning.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Fourteen point eight, consider approving the rain date of June fourth, two thousand twenty-three for the gathering in the circle event. Your motion?
Second.
Motion was made by Supervisor Partridge, seconded by Supervisor Robert Seikap. I believe this is pretty self-explanatory, but do you want to say anything, Paul? Perfect. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, bump up to section thirteen, public hearing thirteen point one, which is phase two land development and conditional use hearing for Ronda McGough Club. My understanding, tell me when you're ready, Tom. Are you ready? My understanding is that we're gonna open this hearing and we're gonna close this hearing. Is that correct, Mr. Skora?
Yes, this was scheduled for a hearing this evening. It was advertised for conditional use. This is related to the conditional use portion of it is related to steep slope disturbance for stormwater facilities, the land development portion, which is not we don't need to open a hearing for it, but the land development portion was for some ports and stuff like that, and I think a small addition and some stormwater facilities. There was, um, I think some issues with the soil where the stormwater facilities are going, so they need an engineer to work through some of those issues. So Mark D'Amico, who represents the applicant Ronda Mae, has provided the township with an extension through, or until May thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. That will take us to the May twenty-second meeting. They hope to be able to present then. So they request a continuance of the hearing to May twenty-second, twenty twenty-three, and if they're not ready, they'll, they'll ask for another extension.
Perfect. All right, so I guess we'll close it now?
Well, just make it, make it formal that you're granting
We're gonna accept the continuance.
And the new hearing date is May twenty-second, twenty twenty.
I will make a motion to grant a continuance to May twenty-third, twenty twenty-third.
May twenty-second.
Excuse me, May twenty-second, twenty twenty-three. And a hearing date on May twenty-second, twenty twenty-three. Is that correct? Is there a second?
Second.
Motion was made by the Chair, seconded by Supervisor Partridge. Is there any board discussion? All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously, and Ronda Mae has continued until the twenty-third, twenty-second. Twenty-second. Sorry, Tom, I'm killing you over there.
He's got fast fingers.
He's got fast fingers. Now move to, uh, section, section thirteen point two. Consider approving the request of D N L R E L C to transfer liquor license R five six one one from seven three one nine Westchester Pike Upper Darby, Upper Darby Township, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, one nine zero eight two dash one six one six into Newtown Township at one oh six Squire Drive. The applicant is represented by counsel who is handing out attachments and then will identify himself for the record.
Uh, Camp Utara for the, for the applicant, which is D N L. Uh, D N L R E L L C.
It just, it just as a preliminary matter, this was originally listed on April tenth. It was advertised on March twenty-seventh and April third pursuant to the Pennsylvania's liquor code, which permits the Liquor Control Board to authorize a transfer of liquor license from one township to another if approved by the Township Board of Supervisors after legislative hearing. So we've had the two publications for April tenth. We needed the continuance to push it to tonight, so we announced it on April tenth to come back tonight, and that's why Mr. Utara is here with his client.
Right. Very good. So we are, we are, I have one witness tonight, David Trout. Who will be, who can answer questions. I'm gonna ask him a few questions and then any questions you may have of him. Just for brief background, the Pennsylvania Liquor Code permits intermunicipal transport within a county of a liquor license restaurant or a E license. As long as the receiving municipality has a hearing. The purpose of the hearing is to receive comments and recommendations of interested individuals residing within the municipality concerning the applicants intend to transfer that license. That's what we're here for tonight. That's section four dash four six one B three. And if I may, and I passed out one exhibit, which is really a menu and some photographs of the restaurant, and with that, I'm gonna call Dave Trout.
You wanna mark this exhibit, counselor?
Yes, please.
What do you want to mark it as?
A one. One, it's fine.
Perfect. Tom, you have a copy of this?
I'll have to give it to you.
We'll give you a copy. And if you can just move, can we get him another microphone so that Ken can speak and the witness can speak? And just try to stay as close to that podium as you can so that people watching on TV can see you and
Yes, sir.
Be very happy with what you're about to present.
Sounds good.
Will you state your name for the record?
David Andrew Trout. T R U T.
Yes, sir. And where do you work, Mr. Trout?
Currently owner-operator of two local Sedona Tap House restaurants.
Okay, and what is D N L R E L L C?
That is David and Lisa, my wife. That is our LLC that we formed for.
And what's the purpose of that LLC?
The purpose of that N S LLC is to be the parent company for the new restaurant that we were opening. Sedona Tap House.
And what is Sedona Tap House?
Sedona Tap House is a restaurant concept that was founded by a husband and wife inspired by a trip to Sedona, Arizona. Concept is, is a franchise. Roughly, we opened in twenty-eleven, our first restaurant. Currently only two restaurants in Pennsylvania, sixteen restaurants nationally, a very small husband-wife franchise group. And we were fortunate to have Phoenixville as our first location and opened in twenty eighteen, and then we opened in Westchester in twenty twenty-one.
I've, I've passed an exhibit out. Can you just put the, for the board, explain what it is? It's an old menu.
Sure.
Some people get too excited about the places.
Uh, this, uh, yeah, this exhibit is, uh, the exhibit that says Sedona Tap House up top is one of our menus here that really features what, what we do most here in our restaurant, which is we sell a lot of great high-quality food, certified sustainable seafood. We cut our own Ahi tuna in-house, we use premium number two grade tuna, certified sustainable rockfish, Norwegian salmon. Very heart-healthy menu. Our founder Julie is a registered dietitian and nutritionalist. She also has celiac disease, so a lot of gluten-free options on our menu, a lot of heart-healthy options. We cater to a lot of families as well. There was a family kids menu portion to our restaurant as well. You know, the restaurant is casual theme, semi upscale, but very approachable and really family-oriented, although Tap House is in our name. Less than ten percent of our revenue actually comes from beer sales, primarily more than seventy percent of our menu is really, is food, related sales, our revenue.
And, and just, can you tell us where this is due to be located?
Sure. So we're going to be located in Building C six, one oh six Squire Drive in the second phase of Ellis Preserve. So that'll, that rest, that building has not been constructed yet, but will be situated within that sixty-eight hundred square foot building there.
And you, I think you already alluded to this, but is Sedona Tap House a family restaurant?
It is, absolutely.
And how, and, and how long you been operating?
So, well, we, I've been in the restaurant business for twenty-seven years now, but the, the restaurant in Phoenixville, we opened in March of twenty eighteen.
And you said you have two of them, right?
Yes.
Phoenixville and Westchester.
Yes, sir.
And what other states are they located in, you know?
Uh, well, the, the company was founded in Richmond, Virginia. So we have Dennis and his wife Julie have four restaurants in the, in the general Richmond area. We have a franchisee, a state senator in Michigan who has two restaurants. And we have a restaurant, one in Connecticut, one in New York. The couple in Louisville, Kentucky.
About how big will this restaurant be?
So the restaurant, sixty-eight hundred square feet, seats roughly two hundred patrons, eighty-four outdoor seats, thirty bar seats.
Um, and obviously you'll be serving alcohol, correct?
Yes, sir.
And do all the Sedona Tap Houses serve alcohol?
They do.
Would this concept work if alcohol weren't involved?
It would. It's, I think, most of the revenue is generated from, from food and non-alcoholic beverage, but it doesn't have to. Oh, no, it would never work, Ken. Sorry. Yeah, right.
What percentage of food alcohol sales do you have?
It's roughly seventy, thirty.
Um, do you consider Sedona Tap House to be a club?
No.
Uh, is there dancing or anything like that?
No.
Live music?
Nope.
Um, what are the hours of operation?
Uh, we're open from eleven AM till ten PM most evenings. We stay up until eleven PM on Fridays and Saturday nights, and we open a little bit earlier. We do brunch on Sundays from ten thirty to two.
About how many people do you expect to employ at this restaurant?
Roughly eighty.
Uh, and do servers get special training with regard to the service of alcohol?
They do. One hundred percent of our staff is RAM certified. RAM certified, yeah.
What do you know RAM stands for?
Responsible Alcohol Management Program.
Okay. And how about the, um, the managers? Do they get a special training as well?
They take an owner-manager RAM certification course.
Uh, and now, as far as community involvement, what type of, do you guys do community activities?
Sure. Yeah, well, a couple of things. Every, every Monday, we do a dine out for charity, which will be a local nonprofit in Newtown Square or the surrounding area. Uh, we do the same in Westchester and Phoenixville with local nonprofits, and we donate proceeds from the sale of a special menu that guests are ordering from on the evening they come in. So it's, it goes to a hundred percent of the public that comes in, even regardless if someone came in to work specifically with that charity. It's not a, like a dine and donate program. It's, it's open to a hundred percent of the public when they come in every Monday.
And how much money did you think you raised?
We raised about twenty-five thousand a year between the two restaurants.
Will Sedona Tap, um, are, are, are you, are there any citations? Do you have any citations?
No.
Will Sedona Tap House adversely affect the health, safety, and welfare morals of the community?
No, sir.
Uh, will it provide an economic development to Newtown Township?
I believe so, absolutely.
Thank you.
That it?
That's all I have, yes.
Yeah. I do have, so we'll move into questions. I do have one question. Can you just clarify, 'cause I was trying to write that the square footage of the, the, uh, restaurant is sixty-eight hundred square feet?
Yes, sir.
Two hundred seats inside?
Yes.
How many outside?
Eighty-four.
Eighty-four? Um, and is that, I'm guessing that is, uh, is it gonna, I don't want to name your competitor, but is it gonna be like the other restaurant that's there where it's kind of a seasonal outdoor seating with a bar? Or are they, you know, how that schematic's set up already?
We'll, we'll have a covered patio, but it won't be, it's not an enclosed patio, so it'll, it'll be a seasonal
Just a
five, six months out of the area, sir.
Just a Yeah.
I, I think you said something about the pricing, but is this actually the pretty much the menu that, that's going to be offered?
It is. Yes.
And maybe just a question.
Sure.
Sure. Maybe it's curiosity. Where's the license coming from in Upper Darby?
It's a, it's a funky name. It's might have it. It's
While you're digging that, while you're digging that out, when, when is this expected to open?
We're expected to start construction in October. That's when our current lease, as I said, taking over the facility. We, we do about a five to six month build out. So we're thinking March of 2024, March or April.
I don't know the name of the establishment.
Yeah, 7319.
Any other questions from the board? Any questions from the public? Do you have anything else, counselor?
That's all I have.
That's all you have?
Move or admission of mine.
Exhibit?
So move without objection. I guess we will now take a vote, but before we do that, I'll just turn it over. There's any board discussion before we get into a vote. The only thing I'll add is that I think that the township has sold the bill of goods with that entire development. When they tried telling us it was going to be upscale shopping and social center. They completely lied to this township. I made that very clear with the, with the entity operators. They gave us a FedEx Kinko's. They gave us a pet store that shut down. They tried comparing it to suburban square and I've said all this to them before, but I just love when this gets on the record again. I think that you will have no competition there because outside of First Watch. They've not delivered a single thing to us, though I am excited for this. I wish you a lot of success with it. This township is craving for that return promise that was given to us 15 years ago that has not materialized by any stretch of the imagination. So I hope that I'm finally starting to smile a little bit when I drive by that area. That I don't smile that often. So again, I wish you all the luck. And I don't know if there's any other board comment, but we can call for the
Have you been to the Sedonas either in Westchester or Phoenixville?
I have.
Good.
I have as well.
I have not, but based off of the, the other tenants that are in that shopping center, I'm sure you're going to blow them out of the water. Yeah. So best of luck. We have a resolution. Supervisor Russo, if you want to do the resolution. I don't have the resolution.
Sure. I think I've had a picture.
Whereas Act PL 90, Article six, section 461, the act has amended 47 P S, section four dash four six one. That sequence, which amends the liquor code, authorized Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board to approve in certain instances. Okay. Now there, or be it resolved, D N L R dot E LLC has requested the approval of the Board of Supervisors Newtown Township of the proposed transfer of the Pennsylvania liquor license. R five, six, one, one to a restaurant, which is to be constructed at one oh six Squire Drive Newtown Square. Newtown Township Delaware County, PA 19073, the premises, with the understanding that the said transfer must be approved at a later date by the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board. Be it further resolved, the Board of Supervisors Newtown Township has held a public hearing on April 24th, 2023 to receive comments on the proposed liquor license transfer and the consideration of the issues. Finds the transfer of the liquor license, the premises by D N L R E LLC will result in job creation, revenue enhancement in dining accommodations for the residents of Newtown Township, all of which will substantially benefit the local economy and its residents. And there, and be further resolved that Newtown Township approves by adoption of this resolution, proposed transfer liquor license. R five, six, one, one into Newtown Township by D N L R E LLC. Be it further resolved that the board or the proposed license transfer is subject to approval by the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board. I hereby certify that this resolution was adopted, the Newtown Township Board Supervisors Meeting, April 24th, 2023. That's my motion.
Second. Motion was made by Supervisor Russo, seconded by Supervisor Partridge. Is there any other board discussion? Again, I wish you all the luck, Mr. Trout. Welcome to Newtown Township. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We will now move to section 14.1. Which is to consider approving the request for Mainline Health for a waiver of land development slash PRD application requirements for a temporary radiology trailer. And Gunnaman, the floor is yours when you are ready. It's the same thing. Just make sure that microphone's on and whoever's speaking, just keep them close to the podium.
Hello, everybody. Jason Korzek, I'm with Fuller Engineering and Civil Engineer for the project. I'm here on behalf of Mainline Health. We do have a few people with Mainline Health, Doug Williams and Mark Tipton here. As well as Tony Sikorsky with CDL Nuclear and also David Falcone with Solium. I'm here to talk about the proposal to add a 475 square foot pet CT trailer located next to the building, the Mainline Health building. In that black box you see on the screen there, that's approximately where the trailer will be located. But you can see there's an existing drive aisle. That existing drive aisle was set up. And the building was designed to accommodate a trailer in the future if, if there was ever any other additional services that the medical office building would have to offer. And or in the future now, this is where, this is where the trailer is being proposed. To give you a little information about what is, what pet CT is. It'll offer diagnostic imaging services that are not currently offered by the facility. The test for coronary artery disease and is recognized as an excellent modality for quality patient care. The trailer will not impact any of the current traffic patterns at the site. That is specifically a drive aisle. There would be no reason for any of the patients to go there and circulate in that drive aisle. All the patients will enter the building at the front entry, which is within that roundabout area. They'll park in that parking facility as well. It's a minimal square footage building, increase to the building, 475 square feet. Mainline Health has approximately 100 more parking spaces existing beyond above what is required by code. Very straightforward application, not increasing impervious coverage. We're outside all the required setbacks. See in that landscape island as well, there is a pretty big planting buffer that will also help mask the trailer from Westchester Pike. In addition to this slide, I had a couple other additional. This was the plan, the site plan that we prepared. That would be the overall site plan for Mainline Health.
Thank you.
Then if you go to the next slide, that is a more close up look. Where the shows where the trailer is going to be located. It also proposes a covered canvas area that'll, you know, protect any of the patients coming from the building into the trailer from the weather. And there's also an emergency exit ramp for any patients in the building that'll ultimately go down to the sidewalk that's pointed out there. That ramp could be used for other events other than emergencies, if the patients happen to be parked in this back rear area. But like I said, patients are going to have to check in at the front desk. They're going to have to go through the main entrance to we're requesting a waiver from the amended PRD planning process and procedures for the proposal. It's relatively minor in nature, not increasing any additional impervious coverage and well within setbacks of
You have a picture of the trailer?
Yes, we do. You might have to zoom in. So that's the first slide up at the top there. If you can zoom in and that, that's just another location showing the drive out where it's going to be located. Yeah, yes.
Up at the top where it says plus Rose, keep going, right? Keep moving your mouse to the left. There you go. Yep.
And then if you go down to the next slide, that is where the photos of similar trailers that are proposed in other locations.
Keep going, Rose. Keep zooming in.
Yeah, keep zooming in if you could. All right. The bottom slide there.
Might as well go like as much as you can, so we can fill up the screen with it.
Okay. And if you, there you go. I, that was the closest similar trailer that we could find. This one will have a nicer canopy to and from the building. And the pictures that you see here, neither of those building, neither of those are that trailer on the, in the picture have the ramp coming down from the platform.
So you have a picture of the screening buffer?
The best picture that we have would be in the slide above that, where you're looking at it more of a side view. But you can see those trees are pretty tall. I mean, we're talking those evergreens are 15 to 20 feet and that trailer is going to be placed basically right in front of those tree or right behind those trees.
How long do you plan to have the trailer there for?
Believe the maximum timeframe for their lease is up to five years. They're figuring by, after a couple of years, they'll have a better understanding if that services that are being offered are well received. And want to be, want to look into maybe potentially moving those services to the building.
Why that location?
Why that location? I think that would probably be best answered by someone from Mainline Health.
Just your name and title for the record.
Sure. David Falcone, counsel for the applicant.
Yeah. All right, Dave.
Good to see you.
Nice to see you too.
So when you say why the location, why the location on this site or why Newtown?
Why the location on this site?
The location on this site was chosen because it's already set up to receive the, to receive the temporary location. It's already wired. All of the, kind of all the installation work that would need to be done somewhere else is already there, so they can simply hook in. They also chose this location because of the existing evergreens, which would provide a natural buffer. So from Westchester Pike. The, the trailer would be located kind of directly behind the evergreens. You'd only see the top and the bottom of the trailer. Be the only visible areas for it. Everything else would be, the long side of the trailer would be directly behind the trees.
Okay.
That's why this location was chosen first and foremost, because everything was there for hookup. Second, because of the buffering is already in place.
Who else?
Okay. Yeah. So, you know, I see the buffering. Which is nice. The Mainline Health building is an attractive building. Putting the trailer there for five years, even with the buffering, I mean, people are still going to see the, the trailer, you know, from different viewpoints. You talked about 475 square feet. Do you have any unused capacity in the Mainline Health building?
I understand there is not currently.
There's no unused capacity in the building?
My name is Doug Williams. I'm Associate Vice President for Design and Construction for Mainline Health.
Sorry, you said Doug?
Doug Williams, yes.
Perfect.
So when you say unused capacity in terms of the modality that we're offering there?
Well, we're looking for, we're looking for 475 square foot of space, right? For this service.
Or
Do you have, sorry, do you have, my question simply, anywhere in this building, do you have 475 square foot of space that can be used for the same purpose instead of putting a trailer there for five years?
So we have space on the third floor, which is not appropriate space for this type of function to put a CT in, in place. We need space on the ground floor.
Can you move anything from the ground floor to the third floor and not the trailer?
So our intention really is to evaluate this for two years. And if, if the volumes are there that we think they're there, then we would make plans to put a permanent location in place.
Yeah. I mean, I'm, I'm one board member. I'm not thrilled about a trailer out, outside the building for two years. I mean, we're trying to this is along the corridor of our, you know, our town center. And, you know, I saw the trailer. I don't know if it's the exact trailer, but to me, i- it's not, you know. If there's other options, it's not aesthetically pleasing and
So I don't know that we have a, a location today that would accept the trailer in, in, in place today. It would take us eighteen to 24 months to get a, to get the space.
Right. But what I'm saying is to provide the service within the Mainline Health building and not a trailer, but that, that's my thought.
So we have CT and we have MRIs. We don't have this pet CT, which is a different modality and offer different views of, of a patient. It uses a different technology, which is what we were hoping to, to have in place.
One thing I'll also offer is, which Doug was kind of alluding to there, this is relatively new technology. It's not available anywhere else. Anywhere else in the Mainland Health network. This is really bringing kind of what they believe to be new and important technology. Testing it out at this facility and when they believe it will do what it does, moving it into this building to make it a permanent institution in the building. It's also something they do want to bring online quickly. Because they believe it provides a significantly better impact for the patient in the way that it scans what, what they're scanning for. So the pet CT machine will do both a pet and a CT scan at the same time, which provides what they believe is kind of more cutting edge ability to identify issues with the patient. In order to get, get this space ready inside the building, they think it's probably really a two year lead anyway. Make the space inside available. This is to bring it online as quick as possible and really buffer the time until they move it into the building.
Yeah. I mean, I'm, I'm for any technology that, that advances healthcare and, you know, you know, it can be a benefit to, to people with serious illnesses. I'm in, in favor of that. I just with the size of the building, I mean, I'm just thinking that, you know, rather than put a, a trailer, you know, but I hear what you're saying. The trailer comes fitted. And what I'm hearing you say, it's going to take two years to fit the building the same way the trailer fitted.
Eighteen to 24 months to prepare the space inside the building to receive this, this technology.
And where would, so in 18 to 24 months, where would you put?
Let me clarify that then. We, we don't know if this is the building that's going to take the, the final, the, where we'll place the final CT, pet CT. Where our volumes indicate, our physicians are prescribing this, this technology for our patients and they're actually going downtown and going other places. We want to bring this into the community. If, if the volumes ramp up and we see that they're, they're headed in the right direction, we will make plans to, to put them in, in the building. Or, or similar, you know, we have other buildings around.
Okay. So that would be another question. So what might in the future, what might be other options as far as a building that, that would take on this, this testing?
So we don't have a building.
Like Bryn Mawr Hospital, for instance, or medical building in Bryn Mawr or
We haven't really gone that far forward with this. Most of our physicians are in this vicinity who prescribe this technology for the patients. But if we want, if we couldn't make space available here, then we would probably start to look elsewhere.
Right. And, and I guess my point there is that if this isn't going to be the facility that receives the equipment and this type of testing in the future. And there's a probability of that being done, for instance, at Bryn Mawr Hospital or Bryn Mawr Medical Building in Bryn Mawr or whatever. Then maybe the testing should be where, you know, the, the permanent fit out would be and not in Newtown Township.
So our intention really is to be here. I, I just don't want to commit to saying that it absolutely is going to be in this location. That's, that's, that's the point I was trying to make. Not necessarily we're going to look elsewhere for that.
So you're saying that the intention is to put it in
We're intending to put it here. But I can't commit to that right now is what I'm saying.
I'm at a loss here because industrial trailer, this tractor trailer goes at a warehouse or a loading dock. This does not go in the front of our building. The fact that you came here and said that this building was pre-proposed to have this exact type of use where this is located. I don't believe it. So you could do an addition on the front and put your, your thing in it, drive the trailer in it, fine. We're not going to put this on front of Westchester Pike when we're spending all this money to upgrade our town. We're not going to put this on front of Westchester Pike when we're spending all this money to upgrade our town. Go put it in Bryn Mawr, see how Rodney would like it. I have a, have a feeling that's why it's here. It's not, it's not going to go in front of this building. I'm, I'm one of five and I'm not voting for it. It does not, an industrial tractor trailer, trailer does not belong in front of our building on Westchester Pike. The fact that you guys would come here and ask us that is insulting, be honest.
So I wouldn't treat it as an industrial tractor trailer.
It is an industrial tractor trailer. It's a fifty-three foot trailer. I know what it is. And you said it was, and you came here and just said this building was pre-positioned for this. Was this proposed when you got the building approved? No, it was not.
Well, the combinations are there made for the building.
Well, go get an addition on the building. You, you could build an addition on, pull the trailer in the addition, put a garage on it, matches the brick, matches the glass and put that on in, in a month or two at most.
Look, in, in, in terms of from Westchester Pike too, this, this is two hundred and thirty feet away from the curb line.
It doesn't matter. It's the front of this building. We, we, we went through this PRD to get the finishes and the, and the, and the look that we want in this town. And we're not gonna put, at least I'm not, I'm one of five and I'm not gonna prove a fifty-three foot industrial trailer in front of the building. Add a, add a garage onto the front and pull it in the garage that matches the, the architecture of that building. It's easily done. You could do it in two months, easily. I'm in a business. So you can't tell me that we, oh, we need a trailer, we need it here and oh wait, it's gonna take us two years to get the space ready if we want to put it in the building. Okay, that's fine. Put an addition on the building to put a garage on this building. It's not going to take you more than two months and that's if you're slow. That's my opinion. I don't know, maybe someone else should comment because like. Yeah, it matches the building. You pull the trailer right in it.
And, and we would, we still had to go through the PRD process to get that, that building in place, right?
Well, Mr. Rosecheck.
I just wanted to bring, uh, this is more a building related concern, but I, I did notice that on the plan, it shows less than a ten-foot separation between the trailer and the building. So the alleyway seems like it would work, but I'm more afraid if there's been an analysis done between the two buildings, typically there's a, a separation requirement of minimum ten, ten feet. And we're already showing on the site plan, it's less than ten feet. Now, they can reduce that amount, but it would have to, it would require an evaluation done on both walls to assure it met the fire rate.
Mr. Reschek, could they put an addition on here with similar architectural features, a garage situation and put the, and put the trailer inside fairly quickly?
I, I would assume, I would assume it would have to go through a similar process.
But, but, but fairly quickly compared to two and a half, two-year process.
Yes.
And then we would have the same look of the building. You could pull the trailer inside. You could have a garage door at both sides. And I don't think that'd be, I think it'd be aesthetically pleasing, but that's just my opinion.
It wouldn't look temporary then.
No, yeah, we're.
Even though they're calling it temporary, except five years.
Yeah, five-year trailer. I don't want a five-year trailer in front of a building.
The trailer looks temporary.
We only allow trailers in here for construction.
If we were, let's, let's go back to hypothetical. If this board was to approve this, would we be approving a waiver for a set timeframe? Would we be setting it like, are we doing a waiver for two years or are you looking for the full five-year waiver? Are you looking for a blanket waiver?
The waiver would just be, it's for the, the PRD process for, to allow anything to happen here without going through full land development. That's the waiver that's being asked. So whether we're here for a trailer or whether we're here for a, a temporary or, I mean, this is going to sound ridiculous, temporary more permanent structure, but it, it's the same waiver.
Understood.
It's to move the process more quickly so they can bring this machine online.
I'm, I'm open to other solutions, but as Mike said, I'm, I'm, I'm with him. I'm, I'm not in favor of putting a trailer outside this building. Um, if there's other solutions, I certainly would be open to them, but that, that's my feelings.
The thing is with trying to put that in an enclosure, there is ventilation concerns with the equipment that's running in there, the, the HVAC system that's needed for this type of facility.
High-end office building and you want to put a fifty-three foot industrial trailer in front of this. You don't live in town. All three of you don't live in town.
I live in Newtown.
Oh, you live in Newtown, okay. Well, everybody else, maybe other than you, because you represent this client, does not want a fifty-three foot trailer, an industrial trailer in front of a high-end office building. We're getting this whole area of town fixed up. Everybody is more than unhappy with the, the process. And the process of now putting a fifty-three foot trailer in front of there is not going to make anybody in town happy. There's maybe one person.
I, I really think from Westchester Pike, you're not even going to be able to see it. I, I don't know if we can go to a street view.
I don't, I don't care if you can see it. It's an architectural zone. It's a PRD. You have certain requirements in the PRD. We held Wawa to them. We held everybody to them and we're not going to really, I, I am not going to waive the requirements for you to put a trailer in front of this building. It's not in the PRD. This is not a construction trailer. It's sitting on the other section of the site for construction of the new buildings. And they're going to leave when they, when they're done with construction. This is a trailer you might have here for five years. And again, you could do an addition on this building that matches the same architecture as a garage and pull the trailer in, put exhaust fans on it and put air conditioning if, if you need it.
So I, I, I don't disagree with anything you think about the aesthetic impact of what they're proposing. I think it's, in, in my opinion, I think it is less impactful than you're characterizing it, but I do believe that having a trailer in front of this building is not ideal. I, I will say though, that I believe this to be a unique situation insofar as we're not putting a, you know, a slush, a slushy machine in front of this building and asking for relief. There is a specific purpose for trying to bring this machine online as quickly as possible. And it, Mainline Health has gone to the effort to secure this machine and they want to bring it to this facility. I think this is a, an important location for Mainline Health. It's relatively central to this region. It's new, it, it is cutting edge and this is important to them. And, and obviously we'll go back to them and we will share your concerns, Mr. Russo, but I do, I do want to say this was not, this was not kind of taken for granted as to what they were asking for here. It's being, the request is being made to bring it online as quickly as possible. That's why it's in a trailer. That's why they're bringing it here. It's, if this was something they believed they could wait for, come through the full process, expand the building, move things around, they certainly would do that. This is something they felt was important, which is why we're here. I don't want you to think we're diminishing your process or, or your opinion. That, that's not why we're here.
But you're looking at this for, uh, what I hear you say eighteen to twenty-four months until you can fit out the, the, the building or, or some other location. So this trailer is going to be sitting here for, it sounds like for a minimum of a year and a half and it could be up to five years.
I, I, I think it's probably closer to, you know, eighteen to twenty-four months. I do. I think that's right.
Yeah, so again, you know.
Not, it's not a three-month trailer. It, it's not. And it's not an inexpensive, nothing in, in this business is inexpensive, but it, it is a significant investment in, in healthcare.
And that brings me to the, the actual picture. Um, wait, were you looking at any other locations on the site or was it because the trees are there and it's close to the entrance?
Two, well, it's, it's not super close to the entrance. It's not kind of on the opposite end of where the patients would.
We walked through the building.
Check in, correct.
Yeah.
The location was really picked for two purposes. One, because we felt there was a pre-existing screen. That would be number, number two actually. And number one is because it's wired already in this location for this, meaning the connections are there from, from an engineering perspective.
Now, Andy, you had mentioned about the ten foot and you're saying on the site plan, it only shows nine feet from the building. What happens if this, something happens with this trailer and it, I don't know, God forbid, something happens with the machine and it catches on fire. And it, it's, is it too close to the building for that to happen? I mean, the, you know, it's, there's no fire rating on the, on the trailer. Somebody comes, they tamper with it or something in the trailer. You know, catches on fire, will it then leap over to the building and catch that on fire?
They would have to provide us information during the permitting process to show that they meet the separation requirements and the ratings of the, of the adjacent exterior walls. So I guess I brought up that point for two reasons. Number one, to make sure we, they understand that the building permit process would have to be followed and they would have to meet the fire ratings or separate the buildings by ten feet, a minimum of ten feet. But if they do that, if that, if the, the only way they can acquire that is to make that separation, they're actually pushing the trailer into the screening, which is problematic.
That was, that was, that's a, a follow-up. Now I have another follow-up question. If there is, you know, instead of a whole building, right, if, does it have to have a roof? If it is a trailer, can they build on these, kind of this, these walls up? And with a garage door maybe on that other side or something like that to put that trailer in? So that way, when you look at it, it doesn't look like it's a, that it looks like it's a building.
I think any, anything like that can be done from a building perspective.
An enclosure.
A rated enclosure is certainly a possibility as long as they are able to get through the PRD zoning process.
Right.
Yes.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, I'm, I'm with Mike. If it's just this trailer there, it's a no from me. I think you've got to go back and you've got to look at another way of being creative and you've got to check with Andy about fire rating and, and things of that nature. I'm not ready to make a motion to move this forward at all because it feels like it's just being pumped there. And, you know, we may never get the benefit of it. You may find that it does work and Mainline Health, you know, has made advances and makes money and, and you find it's better in Bryn Mawr or another location. And, and I don't think it's fair to us to have to look at something like that and without you all putting a little bit more effort into it, my opinion.
A- as one board member, I mean, I'm, I can't speak for the rest of the board, but I'm, I'm willing to work with you on other options. You know, I just, I just don't want the trailer there, you know?
We appreciate that. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Any questions from the public? Your glazer.
Uh, Nathan Glazer, thirty-five, thirty-eight, Haley Road. Having spent forty-plus years in healthcare, I understand what these people are trying to do. They're trying to avoid making a massive capital commitment to a technology, which still remains apparently on the edge of introduction. To modernize or renovate a building creates a sunk cost, which if the technology turns out not to be what it seems to be, and that happens in healthcare routinely, there's a lot of money has gone in and that money has to be recovered, which means we will all feel it at some point through fees and charges that we pay for healthcare. So using a mobile model essentially as a test or demo site to say, is this really what we think it is? Is a way to avoid a commitment that might turn out to be of, you know, an alleyway you don't want to go down. So I honestly don't think the aesthetics issue really justifies the fact that a new imaging technology can be brought online. It can be brought online more quickly and at relatively less overall cost, which benefits every user. And then if the technology pans out as expected, then the time would be there to do a permanent installation, whether it's here or any, anyplace else. Now, people who use these technologies, and I'm going to jump here a little probably beyond my point of competence might be, but in terms of things like neurological conditions, herniated discs and all, nobody with those problems wants to take time to drive to center city because they need it. I wouldn't want to, not if I can avoid it reasonably. So, you know, mobile imaging has been around for over thirty years. Other hospitals, when I started out, when CT was brand new, this was the way of delivering it because people didn't know if they even had space in the facilities. So I think the, 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 the real issue here is being missed, you know? Uh, it's a trailer? Yeah, it's a trailer. Is it adequately covered from Westchester Pike? I think it will be. It's not our building. It's Mainline Health's building and their, their corporate goal and their mission is to deliver the healthcare in the best modality they can. So I think it's really not receiving a, a fair view. I think it's receiving a few based on spurious criteria, particularly when it's given for a limited time period. Now, if this technology does not pan out, and I'm going to read minds here, Mainline Health is going to eventually cut the proverbial bill before it becomes saying, you know, this is not where we're going to continue. And then the renovations would go to some others approach. So as a resident, I don't think it's really that bad an idea. I don't think it's a disaster. I don't think there will be a tidal wave or an earthquake or anything else that will upset the residents here because most of them really are clueless about what goes on behind the trees. I am concerned, I mean legitimately about, uh, the more engineering technical in terms of the separation from the building, not because I think it's going to catch on fire, but because I think that's a bona fide consideration in the installation of anything. But the other stuff I think is really hoping.
Any other comments from the public? Any other comments from the board before we go for a vote?
Yeah, I just have a real quick question for Rich, I guess, maybe. Just process-wise, because we're not voting on the actual trailer, right? We're just voting on their request to waive different process to get, I mean, what, what? Are we on? If we vote no, what, what's the process that happened?
They either have to come back in, uh, and ask for a waiver with different criteria or they have to come back in and do a formal application like a land development thing. I don't think, you know, this, this isn't a very big footprint issue. It's not a, I don't, I don't think it's going to change. I don't know exactly what the current drive aisle is for. I don't know if it's used at all now or, you know, how that would impact traffic flow, but assuming that's not an issue. I don't know that, uh, making them go through a formal process other than waiver would be necessary. If they want to come back with different criteria that would satisfy you, they'll allow a waiver.
I just have one more thing. Uh, I, I think the addition, the existing screen is going to be more than adequate to screen it from Westchester Pike. You're not going to see it from there. I, I, I can say, would, would you be open to potentially providing some kind of screen? That side that we're looking right there, that's from Charles Ellis Drive. Okay, that's going to be the one side that's open from a vision, from a stream. Could we provide some kind of screen there, whether it's, take out some asphalt and put in trees or, um, or a potential like a, a fence or something so that you cannot see?
But you, you could, you could use temporary blocks. They make their architectural blocks like they make when they go out to the concrete plant at the end of the day and make them and make it with some kind of architectural thing. You can put them down there temporarily and put them up just so it closes it off. So it looks like even a large trash enclosure. I mean, you just don't want to see a trailer there.
Understood. Is that, would that be?
You gotta use some common sense. Like there's so many ways you could skin this cat. It's just you gotta, you gotta come up with something and say, hey, we have these three options. What do you think? But make sure you work with Mr. Reschek because you need the fire rating.
And I think that what you're going to get tonight, quite frankly, is I think based off of the, the, this comments that have been said so far, and I don't want to speak for anyone, is that I think it's probably in my personal opinion, Mainline Health's best, in their best interest, probably come back with some renderings of what it is that you're going to propose. Because I myself am going to join the chorus of my colleagues and say, I'm not really in favor of this. Um, the one question that I wasn't asked, that I didn't get to ask yet is with regards to noise, whether this, and, you know, produces any noise, anything like that. Not that that, you know, that's just one factor in there. I'll let you answer it once I'm done. Um, but I think that quite frankly, what we're hearing tonight, uh, is that if there is some sort of adequate screening, your waiver might still be alive. Um, but if not, I think it's fair to say that we're not comfortable with a trailer being parked out front there. That fair from?
How tall is the trailer? Twelve feet? Eleven and a half feet?
Twenty-sixth grade operations manager. I work for CDL, the company that's, uh, going to purchase the, the trailer. So it, it is approximately twelve feet. It's a normal height trailer.
But you, you can't use a furniture level trailer?
A furniture level?
Use a trailer that's closer to the ground? Are these pre-made?
This is, this is to match up with the egress outside of the facility, outside of the hospital.
So, so, okay, the trailer's twelve feet high. I, I think with all the engineering stuff you've guys done, your building, in your company, uh, or go back to somebody or talk to your landscape architect, talk to what you would do in a situation where they have those big blocks with imprints in them. Come up with something on top of it. It looks aesthetically pleasing. Maybe it looks like an over, oversized enclosure of some sort. Don't want to call it trash enclosure, get the trailer in there or trailer enclosure. And you can do something to make it aesthetic, aesthetic, architect, architecturally pleasing so we don't see the trailer. And nobody else sees the trailer and you can still function as long as you make sure you meet the requirement, Mr. Reschek, that meets the building requirement, the fire requirement, that you have the separation distance or the rating of this trailer that's appropriate for the code. And I, I think it's, it, it's not, it's not a huge timeframe. It, it could be done quickly. These are all materials that give.
These are all materials that can, that can be readily moved with a crane.
And I'd also, sorry, Mike, I'd also like to ask you to look at, um, there's that landscaping along Westchester Pike in front of your building because I know that you said that that's adequate screening there, but if the trailer is that tall and, excuse me, and that big, just make sure that you cannot definitely see it. There may, you may have to, we may ask you to put more trees in that, uh, front yard, for lack of a better term, along Westchester Pike. You know, because they cut, they cut the tree, you know, they've cut those branches up pretty high on those pine trees or whatever those trees are, George.
And this, I mean, look, you, you've been here before, multiple things with regards to this, this development project. I mean, we've, we've been told that we weren't going to be able to see the parking garage. You can see that parking garage from every angle, right? So the concern that we have with screening is legitimate screening. Um, because we hear from the residents, contrary to the, the public comment that we might have just heard, but like, we hear this non-stop, that people were told one thing and we're seeing another, or we were told one thing and we're getting another. Um, if there's no more questions from the board, what I would ask, and this is either for you, Mr. Falcone, or for, for the engineer, are you amendable to coming back with some renderings of what it is that you could do with, with, uh, screening? Where do you want us to take a vote? Come back in a month. We do meet, we meet twice a month, so it's up to you if you want to come in two weeks or if you want to come in a month.
Two weeks.
Yeah, so communicate with our solicitor. Um, so, and Mr. Reschek, uh, for getting that all set up.
Thank you.
And then what I would do is I'll, I'll make a motion to table this four point one until the next meeting, which Suzanne will add into the minutes or whatever that date is, or whenever you tell us that you guys are amendable to.
That's great. We appreciate all the comments tonight. We'll work on it. Be back.
Great. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Um, sure, second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Uh, hi.
Suzanne, for the minutes, that was seconded by Supervisor Chalmers. I made the motion, yep. All right, we will now move down to old business. There is no old business, section sixteen. We already did the resolution for the liquor license. We'll now move down to board comment. The only thing I have is that on this Saturday, the twenty-ninth of April, uh, the Saturday at ten AM, uh, the, the Newtown Square Shade Tree Commission will be celebrating Arbor Day with a planting along Goshen Trail. So come to the Goshen Trail at ten AM and, um, help plant some trees. But that will move it over to public comment. If there's any members of the public who have public comment, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record.
Uh, there we go. Nathan Glazer, thirty-five, thirty-eight, Kaylee Road. Um, since it's near the end, I'll try to be brief. Um, I took note that, uh, Radnor Township and Havifer Township have implemented ordinances to phase out single-use shopping bags, the plastic bag. And I think we would be well-served if we moved in that direction. Now, I understand, uh, because I spoke with Lenz out here on, by accident, that there apparently there had been some discussion of this or some approach of this in the past. And, uh, I guess there's no reason to rehash whatever has already gone on with that. I mean, the virtues of getting rid of the bags, I think, really speak for themselves. But I would urge that, uh, we move forward with some alacrity and speed because I think this is a, this is a very substantial step that can be taken to improve the environmental landscape. Uh, a lot of the things we do here look good, feel good. They don't really do that much good. This is something that really would do some very material good in the greater world. Um, in which we live. So I would just like to see this, uh, move forward with some haste in terms of whatever needs to be done to enact the appropriate ordinances, to educate the residents. Um, I know I've been using just, uh, reusable bags now for over fifteen years. And it's pretty convenient. It's not really a problem. I think anybody can adapt to it fairly easily.
The only thing I'll add, because I said this to Mr. Glazer and I want to make sure it's, it's also noted, is that what I said, the part, part that you missed out, uh, or, or that wasn't mentioned is that the township has instead embraced a sustainable Newtown Square program that is being led by our environmental advisory council under the leadership of the entire EAC, but really the stewardship of, of Dane Shoemaker. That voluntary pledge is a pledge that is being signed by businesses, large businesses such as Boron, SAP, um, and a few other ones and small mom and pop shops such as, um, I think from the Top Studio of Dance, um, and a few other ones I'm drawing a blank on. Um, and that voluntary pledge, uh, the running place is the one I was thinking of, that voluntary pledge allows them to start moving towards environmental sustainable practices. It also allows us to study real time, whether or not a bag ordinance is something that is amendable or palatable for the community right now. The biggest concern that I've always had in these discussions is the cost that will go on our small businesses who own and operate those businesses in the township. I'm not concerned about Wawa. I'm not concerned about Acme or any of those other ones. I'm worried about the Bunny Hairs, the Blush Salons, the Casey's, the Cut Above. Um, and so this program is doing just that. It'll study it. It'll allow them to do it voluntarily with no obligations. Um, and it will have, I believe, as I've shared, um, a positive impact, so. Is there any other public comments? Although, uh, we will make a, we will adjourn. Thank you very much, everyone.